Okay, next on the agenda is consent agenda. Has everybody had a chance to vote right on the consent agenda? And it so is our motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Councilor Kramer for support.
I'll support.
Supported by Councilor Pop and further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those? Motion carries. Uh, this goes down to the yes and citizen forum. Is there anybody that wants to address the council?
We would like to, or at least I would, like to know, um...
Can you please step to the podium? Give your name and address and...
My name is Sharon Stutzman. I'm the owner of the White Lakes IGA. And my address is forty-seven thirty Vermillion Trail Gilbert, Minnesota. Um, we would just, or at least I would, I would like to know how far you are with the Dollar Store, if you've signed a lease, if we can stop it, if we can object, um, what we can do to oppose it.
Um, we typically don't reply during public comment. If you want to reply from the city council, you'll need to be on the agenda itself for discussion. So, um, public comment is for the council to receive that public comment. Uh, if you, if you wanted something on the agenda, the next meeting is on the twelfth if you want to have a back and forth discourse with the council.
Okay, I was told to come to this meeting and that you knew about some concerns. So that is why I'm here, that's why some of these other people are here. We would like answers.
Okay, the answers I can give you is at this time, the council is in the middle of a negotiation for sale of the parcel where the basketball court is at. The terms of that contract are confidential at this time until such time that it is approved.
Okay, what's the next step for somebody like me then? Just to, because I've already written a letter about the decision. What can I do?
At this point, the council is moving forward with a contract with a developer for that parcel. And I know, um, you did send a letter, an email to us that we read. Is there anything else you want to tell us or share with us about your objection to it or...
I just think that you should have, um, asked the businesses how it would impact because right from the get-go, thirty percent is what a grocery store loses. Thirty percent, I will not be there. Not to mention what it's going to do to the market. So, I just think that there were other things to consider before you move into discussion. That's all I have to say.
I'm Bonnie Locken. I live at two-thirty Andover Road in White Lakes. And I too would like to discuss this issue. Um, the parcel of land has been sold. Is that what I just heard?
The council is in negotiations for the contract to sell that parcel, yes.
I want you to remember back when that piece of land was to be sold to Range Funeral Homes. Now, we all know what happened to Range Funeral Homes. They held two funerals in that building. And now it's the police and fire department. Is that what we're going to have? Is another empty building? Or are we going to have an empty shopping center? You need to realize that there are businesses in this town that have been here a very long time. Why would you want to bring in another business? And I know it's confidential, just like the funeral home was, who you're selling it to. But I want you to also remember that this town could use something other than a Dollar Store. If you want to buy something for a dollar, you can go to Ben Franklin Masada Drug and buy something for a dollar. We do sell Dollar products. You are going to run our grocery store out of town. Right now, that grocery store is basically a convenience store because people don't want to leave town to go do their shopping. She has to overprice her products in order to keep her lights on. And if you bring in a Dollar Store or a Family Dollar, I believe that you are going to hurt this town more than you're going to help it. If you brought in a clothing store, a shoes store, a fast food store, any one of those would bring business to this town, not driving a business out of town. Thank you.
Jenny Erickson. I live at five-oh-three Partridge. And I am in agreement with the people that I've spoken already on the positions that we hold. I moved to White Lakes because Masabi Nugget opened up. And we came over here because of that business. The one hesitation I had to moving here was there was nothing in this town other than the grocery store and the Ben Franklin. There was nothing for my kids, there was no activities. And I was worried that this town wasn't going to have anything to stand on as we went forward. I have talked to other people who have had businesses in the area. And I know they have approached at one point or another to come here and they've been turned away. And they had wages that would support families, but they weren't welcome. We are concerned because we want to see this town grow. There are a lot of Dollar Stores, like she said. When you do the research, there's a lot of information out there on why towns don't want them to come in. They come into impoverished areas, people that are struggling economically. And then when they get into town and they drive out the pillars, like the grocery stores and the pharmacies and things like that, then their prices start to go up. When you compare their prices, they seem really good at the beginning. But as you do a comparison and you pro-rate for volume and things like that, they actually cost more. You don't get your fresh foods, you don't get your fresh vegetables. You get those convenience store items that aren't healthy for people. We have a population of seniors that need healthy, good food. They're not going to get that there. If we lose our grocery store, they now have to travel. When I lived in Aurora, I used their grocery store. I used their drug and variety store. The Dollar Store and the Family Dollar came in, those businesses are gone. They're trying to get back grocery stores and they're struggling to do that. I don't want to see that happen to my hometown here. I personally shop at the IGA three, four times a week because I know how important it is to have that access available. I go and I get my drugs at the Ben Franklin, even though I have to buy a thirty-day supply because I want that available to people. It's important. And when you lose those pillars, you lose the reasons for people coming into town. When you look at what this offers, will it draw people into town? What's their reason for coming to White Lakes? We don't have Palmette yet, we don't have Masabi Nugget, we don't have things to bring people in. They can get the Dollar Store in Virginia, but they can also get everything else they need in Virginia. Why would they come here to shop at a Dollar Store? We're going to lose our businesses that have been part of this community for many, many, many years if this comes in. And when it comes in and we lose them, what's left for our people? That's a very, very big concern.
Was there anything else to say?
Why is it so serious?
Well, yeah, um...
When you look on the minutes, it says retail development. And you guys are even saying now you can't tell us any details. But there should be transparency here. We should have a say in what's coming into our town. We want to see things grow the town, but we have no voice. We're coming in after the fact, finding out after the fact. When I looked on the website for the minutes, there was no minutes on what that development is. When we're here in the meeting, you can't officially tell us anything. So how can we go out and do our part to help bring information forward if we don't have the time to locate and give you something in writing? You know, I, I know we could say we don't want show favoritism. We want to let people come in who want to come in. But don't we have a commitment to the people that are here that go out in our community? When things like the hockey team needs things donated, they're supporting our community. When the parades need money coming in, they support our community, they join in. The Dollar Stores, their headquarters are in Tennessee. Everything that goes in there leaves. So if our businesses close because they come in, you lose that community support. You lose that connection, the people that are here that want us to grow. They no longer have an outlet because the businesses that we do have here aren't being supported. And things like that coming in are going to drive our things out. So we just, we want more transparency. We want to have a voice to be able to discuss things and provide you with that data and things like that to support our positions. But how do we do that if we don't know what's going on? So we want more transparency. We want to be part of these decisions because we live here, we shop here, we work here. We want to give opportunity here. But we have no voice and you guys are making decisions that affect all of us. So we're upset because we have no say.
Can I address your concern?
Yes.
The initial meeting with the developer was completely open to the public. Site plans were shown, discussions were had, completely open to the public, no one attended.
We didn't know.
No, all I saw was retail development.
All of our meetings are posted on our board as required by law.
But did it say what it was for?
Yes, a retail development.
But I'm not concerned if, like she said, it's a shoe store, a clothing store, something that is beneficial that's going to draw people here. I'm concerned when it's things that are going to drive business away. And there is statistics saying when they come into town, the businesses that would have come in after don't come. It's actually part of the reason there's economic downfall. We can't stand to have that again. We need growth and I don't believe that this is going to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a question. I guess I know maybe Becky or, or council you could answer it. So we had discussed that if the grocery group wanted to meet with the council individually at a special meeting. Is that still on the table?
Well, we advised her to attend and speak during public, which she's done.
Right, but I think at that meeting, we said that if she had the option to schedule a special meeting with us or to come to this meeting. Now, I may have heard wrong. I don't know if the other counselors heard the same thing, but I think that's what it was stated. And I think we all, the group, that option, if they wouldn't, if we'd like to spec, schedule another special meeting for, so we can interact with you because we typically, we can't right now because it's citizen concern. We sit here and listen, but we can't interact with them.
Right, so, so the, this is all, this is all something just for the, for the audience. So the, the council's, uh, has to abide by what's called the open meeting law. So, uh, so for example, on the, on the fact that this was something that was actually presented at a public meeting, uh, that was properly posted. The, the city council, when they, when they have their regular meetings, they have to post a meeting agenda and it lists what's on the agenda. That's all, you know, that's all there for public consumption. If people are interested in coming to see what the council's going to be acting on, the public has that right. Uh, but with something like this, uh, since it's being presented as part of the public forum at the beginning of the meeting and it's not a, a specific posted meeting agenda item, uh, the city council, because it's not on the actual, it's not listed on the agenda, the city council can't take any action tonight because it's not part of the posted meeting agenda that this specific item is on the agenda for potential action by the city council. So under the open meeting law, uh, since this is being presented as information that you're sharing with the council, which is absolutely your right and encouraged to do that as citizens of the community, to come forward and share this information. But since it's not part of the posted meeting agenda, the city council can't, we can't take any action to address your concerns here tonight. We couldn't take any official action, uh, because we're constrained by the requirements of the open meeting law. So, um, it, it certainly is the council's prerogative. If they wanted to have this on an actual meeting agenda, they could, they could, uh, basically direct to place it on a special meeting agenda, call a special meeting of the city council where maybe this would be the only item on the agenda to have, uh, you know, to have a discussion with concerned citizens, possibly to take action on what your concerns are. So they could do that as a posted special meeting agenda or they could direct to put it on the agenda at the next regular city council meeting to have it as actually a specific agenda item. Uh, the other thing too is, um, the, the, the purchase agreement hasn't been finalized. There's, as typically happens with any sort of, uh, agreement between parties, there's negotiations that happen, there's an agreement that's proposed. Uh, and then, uh, parties make counter proposals, they maybe propose different terms. So essentially what's going on right now is a negotiation over terms of a purchase agreement. Uh, now, before, before that purchase agreement is finalized, it does have to come, the final version of that has to come back before the council and that has to be approved at a public meeting of the council. Uh, and basically the council would have that on a meeting agenda, the final version of the proposed purchase agreement. And then the council would vote whether or not to approve that and to authorize the signing of that purchase agreement. Once it is a, a final signed document, then it is a binding purchase agreement. It is a binding contract between the city and the purchaser. But that again would be on a posted meeting agenda and it would be something that would have to be approved at a public meeting by the council and, and the council would have to authorize signatures. So with that, I mean, it's, it's really, to answer Councilor Pop's question, you're, you're absolutely right, it's completely up to you. Again, this was being done as part of the public forum. That's why you can't, you're, you're absolutely correct. That's why we can't really take any action or directly address concerns tonight. So you do have the option as a council to either set a special meeting on this with this on the agenda or to take it up at your next regular city council meeting.
Council?
I would like to try to set up a special meeting to address this. We've obviously got a lot of concerned citizens and I think it'd be a good topic to, to be able to interact with people and so. As soon as possible that we could set up a, a special meeting.
Okay, would you like me to coordinate schedules on that?
Sure, if you could, great. And then how will that be posted so these folks will be able to, to know when that meeting is?
It'll be posted on our public board. That's right across, near the bathrooms. That's where, at least, no less than three days prior to the meeting, it'll be posted in that location. Uh, typically, but not always, it's also posted online. Um, we're not legally required to post it online, but we typically do get it online as long as there's no glitch in technology.
Again, I'm Bonnie Locken, two-thirty Andover Road. Um, I just, I have a question regarding the decision, the final decision. Is that the seven of you that do that? Or do, do the citizens of this town have a say in? We elected you to serve us. Do we have a say in your decision?
So the process is the five counselors, so Deb, Dan, Dave, Stuart, and Sherry. They're the ones who make that decision and they are not subject to public comment. So they can make a decision exclusive of any public comment that they receive. The citizens have the right to vote on their elected officials, but the elected officials do not have an obligation to the citizens to, in any way, unless it was a, um, ballot measure.
Right, so just to address that further, that, to whether or not to sell real estate in this manner, that's completely within the policy decision-making authority of the city council. They are the elected officials here in the city who have that under state law. They have that authority to make that kind of a discretionary policy decision on whether to sell land for this purpose. As far as do you have a say in it? Absolutely. And you just, you folks have just shared your views on the subject. Uh, and that's absolutely your right to come forward and, and express your views on the subject. And city counselors, when they're making those types of discretionary policy decisions, they take a lot of information into consideration, including the viewpoints of concerned citizens in making the final decision on whether to, to enter into a final purchase agreement for that purpose. So you have been heard on that. If they do put this on another meeting agenda, you will have further opportunities to be heard. Um, uh, if there's going to be a special meeting on this. And then finally, uh, if and when a final purchase agreement is presented to the city council for final consideration, again, that will be part of a public posted meeting agenda and you would have a right to come. And again, at a public forum portion of the meeting, uh, have, you can express your final concerns on the subject before the city council makes a final decision. So your concerns are heard, but it's one of many factors that the city council takes into consideration when making the final decision.
Any new council people coming on approaching here?
So we have one.
Just one?
Dan is retiring and Brennan Scott will be taking a spot.
Okay, moving on, reports from staff, city administrator.
Um, so we are still waiting to hear back regarding some additional information on the Fisherman's Point twenty-twenty-three manager. I apologize if that is taking longer than anticipated. Uh, we are looking to schedule a special council meeting on December fifth at five o'clock PM um, for presentation from marketing firms on the arena and a couple other agenda items. So please, council, let me know if you have any conflicts on that date and time. Uh, we did send out a letter to Bow School Property previously. The Minnesota Department of Health called me. They indicated that they were not able to help. Uh, the only way the Minnesota Department of Health would be able to help is if they licensed a business within the facility, uh, daycare, food service, that kind of thing. So unfortunately, the Minnesota Department of Health doesn't have any oversight on the property itself. Saint Louis County Public Health and Human Services is investigating the complaint. Uh, Carol Hozel has been appointed to that position. So she gathered some information from me. I provided her with our blight officer's phone number. Um, we talked about ordinances and expectations regarding the property and she did indicate she would get back to me as soon as she had any more information. That's all tonight, mayor, thank you.
Uh, public works director, Ms. Mary Tann.
Yeah, just a quick update on the campground bathhouse project. Uh, the general contractor was out there today. They installed the trusses and started on the roof sheathing. Uh, they plan to get, as far as getting the interior walls done, the doors and windows in so it's weather tight for the year. At which point, the mechanical contractor or electrician can continue to do their work if they so choose. Uh, the general contractor wasn't planning on doing any temporary heat to keep working for the winter season. So, uh, once they get to that point, it'll be out of standstill till spring.
Set? Okay, thank you. Chief Stewart?
Just a second.
Okay. So you're turning around though?
I'm here, council, just, uh, we'll have comments later on some of the, uh, items and new business, but other than that, I have nothing.
Thank you. Reports from local officials, Councilor Pop.
Uh, nothing tonight, mayor.
Councilor Kramer?
Nothing to report.
Councilor Graham?
Nothing to report tonight.
Councilor Boardard?
Nothing tonight, mayor.
Full business, uh, ten point one, ordinance number two-three-six rental registration.
This is the ordinance we discussed at the last meeting regarding, uh, registration of rentals within the city. And remember, this is long-term rentals, anything thirty days or longer. Uh, the ordinance has been posted as required. And so if you so choose tonight, once you approve it, it will then get published in our legal newspaper and have full force of law immediately following. Um, we did, I can't remember if it's this one or the next one that has a grace period in it. We will provide, uh, owners with a slight grace period, um, for twenty-twenty-three registration just because it is kind of a tight deadline before January first. So, uh, it, that will be understanding in our office. And we will also set at the next council meeting the fees for this and the short-term rentals.
Do you know about solving over a problem to that, or do you?
I do not. I am working on a list and, uh, for mailing.
So, yeah, Becky, this one does have the effective date of April one of next year to allow that timeframe for people to complete the process. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Councilor Pop to approve. Your support?
I'll support.
Supported by Councilor Graham. Any further discussion? Um, just run this by Mitch. Uh, you've looked over this?
Yeah.
You don't have any issues with it?
No, they're, they're good, they're good to go.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those, motion carries. Uh, ten-two is ordinance number two-thirty-seven regarding short-term rental licensing.
In similar fashion to the one you just passed, uh, this has been posted as required. It is for short-term rentals, meaning properties for rent for thirty days or less in time period. Uh, again, I don't know of any in town. There used to be one, but the property did sell. Um, so I can't find anything on Airbnb or VRBO listed in town. So we'll be sure to publicize this as required. And so all property owners should become aware of this requirement moving forward.
Okay, is there a motion to approve ordinance number two-thirty-seven?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Councilor Kramer, is there support? I'll support that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, motion carries. New business, uh, eleven-one Ranger snowmobile ATV invoice in the amount of one thousand nine hundred seventy-two dollars and thirty-eight cents. Payable to Roots has barment for wetland credits on the Moose Trail between Gilbert to Belawick.
This is your final of three wetland credits for the Ranger Snowmobile ATV Trail, uh, that Gilbert to Belawick section. Uh, just a reminder, we are a pass-through for all of these Ranger ATV invoices. So we pay the money out and then we get reimbursed through various grants.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Councilor Boardard, is there support?
I'll support.
Supported by Councilor Kramer. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, motion carries. Um, Ranger Snowmobile ATV Trail invoice in the amount of one thousand nine hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents payable to SEH for engineering services on the Seven Beavers Moose Trail, Belawick to Skyville.
Same fashion to the last invoice, we are a pass-through through this. Um, on this invoice, it was indicated that there was another invoice billed, a thousand-dollar invoice that we have not yet received. Um, so I am following up with SEH if they've sent it, where they've sent it to, and if we need to pay it.
So right now, we're just approving or dis?
Yep, the nineteen-hundred-dollar one. Yep.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Councilor Pop, support?
I'll support.
Supported by Councilor Graham. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, motion carries. Number three Ranger ATV Snowmobile, Snowmobile ATV Trail Service, Trail invoice in the amount of two hundred and fifty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents payable to Saint Louis County for phase one construction on the Moose Trail Gilbert to Belawick.
Um, after quite a bit of back and forth with Saint Louis County and SEH, uh, this is how we are administering, um, the, the remainder of our DI triple R grant. Um, essentially what happened is Saint Louis County is, has a really big chunk of money, like, um, eight-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars. And they had just been, been paying out of that for the Ranger ATV and Snowmobile Club. And then we're getting up against the deadline on that D-triple-I grant. So, uh, Saint Louis County's has already paid it. They've invoiced us. Now we're going to pay it and then issue a request from I-triple-R and then pay Saint Louis County. Um, so it seems like a very roundabout way for everyone to get their money. But this is what we need to do to spend on the D-triple-I grants.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Councilor Boardard, support?
I'll support.
Supported by Councilor Pop. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Okay, 11-4 animal understanding with Ranger snowmobile ATV club regarding non-licensed equipment.
As discussed at your last council meeting, or two council meetings ago, the MOU in front of you outlines the requirements for the city to cover Ranger ATV snowmobile equipment, anything not licensed under the city's blanket policy. Essentially, the city takes ownership of all equipment. Any repairs or maintenance are the responsibility of the Ranger ATV snowmobile club. We had just discussed this terms, this just kind of outlines them. I believe Roy received a copy of that. I didn't hear any concerns back from him on it. So.
Mayor, I do have two, just kind of just minor language things here. I would like to see added to this, under the Ranger ATV snowmobile club responsibilities, that they will just commit that for any of their members who are using or the non-licensed equipment will be properly trained. In other words, they have their club members who I'm assuming get on this equipment and go out and maintain the trails. We should add a bullet point that they commit that whoever they're gonna have operating the non-licensed equipment is properly trained to operate it, number one. And then in that last bullet point, where it says we'll be solely responsible to reimburse city the total cost of insurance in the instance of a loss, that actually should be reworded because I think that defeats the whole purpose of the agreement. The reason we're doing the agreement is so because they can't afford the insurance. So that should be reworded to say something like, we'll be solely responsible to reimburse the city for any, something like any out-of-pocket expenses incurred by the city, such as deductible costs in the event of a loss.
Perfect.
So other than that, so just go ahead and approve it, but with those amendments. Otherwise, it looks good.
Roy, you speaking for the?
Yeah, I am. Roy Borger, Ranger snowmobile ATV club. So yes, we are fully in agreement, and everyone that runs are, then has to go through training session. That's happened with me and everybody below me. So that's the total thing, and I agree with the change on that total cost thing.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Councilor Kramer. Is there support?
I'll support.
And just make sure it's as amended.
Yep, as amended, yeah.
That's okay with you, Deb?
Yes, as amended.
Okay. Sherry?
I will support that contract as amended.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries. 11-5 Ranger snowmobile ATV club letter request regarding parcel number 142-0070-01308.
This is essentially the Two Flow buildings on the corner of Dorchester and 666. Ranger snowmobile ATV club is looking to purchase them from Flow. There are a few requests outlined in their letter. I grilled Stuart a bunch before he submitted the letter, so any questions you had, he was sure to answer in that letter. The couple other things that, as Kenny and I were talking about it, is we would want to, or the council would probably want to request that the Ranger ATV club commits to repairing and maintaining the current structure. It does need some paint, there's some wooden lean-to's, and that any outside storage is behind a privacy fence. Neither of those things are required in a commercial district, but the council may want to consider that when you look at moving forward with an agreement for the building. Buildings.
Yeah, so that sums up basically our requests to purchase the building. We've already made Flow International an offer. After they had the building graced for $180,000, I believe, we made them an offer, and they did accept our offer of $40,000. So we think this is a really good time to make our move to a bigger building. Of course, as fiscal agents, you guys would be, you know, the owners of the building once the purchase is made. We would pay the purchase closing costs, but I'm sure that the city attorney would have to be involved in some way to make sure that, you know, it meets whatever city qualifications it would need. Yeah, and the privacy fence would be a thing we would do. I don't think it would be necessary as, because with this own storage, we would hardly have anything left sitting outside. I think we can get everything inside almost in time. The other thing is, is, you know, we would vacate the building right now, having the city's storage building for the city to use. Yeah, any other questions, I would be happy to answer.
So I know we touched briefly on any repair costs or anything that needed to be done. Obviously, the roof has been, you know, that could be a huge cost. That's been inspected, and you're good on it. Let's just say we had a roof failure. Who's gonna cover that cost, the city or?
We'd cover the cost for getting the place fixed up and ready to roll, including getting it painted.
So just to be clear, this building would be owned by the city, so it would be on the city's itemized property insurance. So I assume it would be, we would have an MOU similar to, as we do, non-licensed equipment. We would have to pay our deductible on that, and then the Ranger Club would reimburse us if there was a catastrophic issue like that.
Or we might do, since this is real estate, we might do a land license.
Yeah.
You know, or we give them a license for use of the building.
A lease or something, yeah.
And then the purchase agreement, of course, since we're gonna be the record owners of it, the Flow would be the seller, of course, on the purchase agreement. We would be the buyer under the purchase agreement, so we would have to just finalize that. But I'm assuming Flow would probably provide us with a standard commercial purchase agreement for commercial property.
Yes, they already mentioned that they would prepare the purchase agreement, so, you know, if it gets to that, you know, you guys would be in touch on how to transfer it to your name.
Yep, and I'm sure that Colosmo, Patchen, and Carney have a lease we could utilize with specific terms for the property.
With the tax exempt status, it says it will become tax exempt. Do we have to apply for that?
It's city property. Okay, yep, city property automatically is tax exempt. Um, would you be looking for a motion of support? So you have something on record?
I think what, yeah, you do is basically approve the concept and the outline terms, and then, you know, just authorize that the city attorney's office, city administrator's office can move forward with, you know, looking at a proposed purchase agreement from Flow, and then also a proposed license agreement or similar document with the ATV club. So if you just, if you approve the concept and authorize us to go forward on that basis, then we can, we can work on it. And then, of course, any finished product, any final product, will have to come back before the council for final approval.
Just another thing that was actually number one on my agenda here was to thank the city council and Becky for all of our, you guys' support that we have with our, you know, as our fiscal agent, it's gotten a little tougher lately because we've got so many big projects going right now.
Yeah.
But yes, a big thank you for that anyways.
Okay, is there a motion for support on this?
I'd take a motion to move forward with the purchase agreement. More than.
You wanna direct that to the city attorney and?
Do you want me to read a motion for you, Sherry? So a motion to authorize city attorney Brunfeld and city administrator Lammy to review and to provide support of the club in this endeavor?
I will make that motion.
Okay. Is there support?
I'll support.
Or by Councilor Pop. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries. This is a RAS nomination. Currently, I am on the RAS board. My term doesn't expire until the end of next year.
Oh, I did review the terms of the nomination, and I believe we are only eligible to nominate one member, and since we already have a member on the board, I don't think that the council needs to nominate or take any action on this item. I can just mark it down as informational.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
11-7 ordinance is regarding tobacco, tobacco product sales and cannibal sales.
All right, so poor Chief Suler has to be here tonight for this. I have been reviewing the League of Minnesota City's website, as well as watching what some other larger cities are doing regarding THC sales in their communities. We cannot prohibit it. The city could, if they so choose, put a one-year moratorium on sales of THC products within the city, but you are not able to completely prohibit THC sales in your city. Kind of reviewing what has worked in other cities, more than likely, the best avenue to take going forward would be to license tobacco products, which St. Louis County currently does for our city. So we would just take over that licensing from St. Louis County and put in an ordinance of our own, and then also require that any THC store has to also have a tobacco license. So if Dan wanted to retire from the council and go open up a THC store, which I know he's doing, he would have to first have a brick and mortar store, which is part of that tobacco licensing requirement. It has to be a brick and mortar store. It can't be mobile sales. It can't be delivery unless the council chooses to change that in the draft. And then he, so he has to buy a tobacco license. He also has to buy a THC sales license. So it's a double license for those facilities, which is understandable when we're looking at a new regulation. There are a few questions on this, on these things. They are highlighted in your ordinance specifically regarding delivery. I did remove that. It's highlighted in yellow and crossed off. If you want there to be delivery, we can add that back in. The other things that were in there is, it did say you could give away tobacco and THC products, so I did remove that. I don't assume we want giving free samples out type situation. But the three ordinances in front of you, the first one is updating the zoning ordinance to allow for tobacco, tobacco products, and THC sales in our retail districts. And then the second ordinance in the packet is tobacco and tobacco products, and then the third is THC products. The last thing in there are those applications. The tobacco store application has a background check in it. They submit a background check form. It also requires that they have insurance. That is not included in the THC application, just because if they're applying for THC, they already have a tobacco license, and we already have that information. Chief Suler, did you have anything to add?
I think I just, again, if we talk about that, we also to start thinking in what direction is, you know, we know THC levels are allowable, and what do you see our city looking like as owners of law of those things? So if we look at it and think of it as a liquor store type setting, there's something of specialized product that is not legal, and people should have a right to purchase that, it's just where you think those places belong. It's also things bought, lost, or by turnbogs from all of you.
I want kids playing football in my backyard.
So that's challenging another one, is what does that structure look like? I think that we've got good examples across our range if you look around. What we probably don't want for a tobacco or THC sales in what that does to your community, that's the first thing you see coming in, or the last thing you see leaving. So I think my biggest concern is, is that if we allow them to break the order, let's get our standard up, where we all expect it to be, like indoor business, and just let them self-shoping anywhere they want. So, yeah, it's gonna be on the calls on all the level you want to be with your ordinance. You can be stricter than the state law, we cannot be looser, so. Right now, I think it'd be great if we put a moratorium on it and got our feet under it, just like some of the other cities did, but if that's not the direction the city wants to take, there's laws in place right now of what is allowed or what's not, as far as animal school. I think that's the big topic in the legislative session will be legalization. I don't think we're more than a year or two away from that. And again, when you are a city, when it comes to support, you give out 10 licenses in a year, maybe a little investment for a taller size, you have the authority to run on that, and you have the authority to restrict the number of licenses. You know, those are some questions I have. I'm trying to remain fair and impartial, keep my personal feelings on this, and present the information to the council as they see. So I'm trying to stay neutral and just understand that if we don't have a choice to allow some of them to take the businesses in front of our community, what do they look like, and, you know, the laws and age is already there. It's pretty standard when you apply your tobacco listing, what you can solve, you can call us.
Mitch, we put a one-year moratorium on this. Are we going against any state law statutes?
No, I think you can, you can do that, but.
Was there a date that it had to be implemented?
Yes.
I think.
I think we'll have to look at that, but this is just presented at this point for, you know, just to get your feedback. I mean, these are draft ordinances, you know, that, I mean, I think some of the areas are highlighted, just to try to get your feedback on what direction you would want to go. If you think that you want to pass these ordinances and get them officially into the city code, you know, then we can bring back, well, you can give us that authorization. Some of this would have to be changed, for example, some of the penalty provisions.
Yep.
You know, we have to clean up some of that language, and, but we just kind of need your general feedback at this point. You also, as a council, would have the prerogative, if you wanted to refer this to a committee to do some more legwork on it, and then come forward to the full council with a recommendation. Maybe the committee would be made up of two counselors, maybe somebody from planning and zoning, and then the administrator and the chief, and, you know, dive into this a little deeper, and then come back with a recommendation. I certainly can provide any legal support in that regard, or you can just take it up as a full council and provide us with your feedback.
With nothing on the books, it's well and less, they can do whatever they want? Does that make sense?
Yep, that is correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Within state law.
What, I know we talked about maybe setting how many licenses we would give out in the city, how, like a liquor license, how many are we allowed in the city right now to give out for liquor license? We have a set cap, don't we?
I believe we do. I would have to do some research on that.
So we can, it's legal to do something like that when we have so many liquor license? We could have so many THC tobacco store licenses issued too?
Right. You'd want to remember that you have a gas station and a grocery store that sell, and, you know, keep that in mind. You also probably would want to make sure that your tobacco and THC licenses match, because you don't want to be seen as discriminatory against THC, that kind of thing. So we could definitely investigate doing a cap on licenses.
But any retail currently could apply for this and sell it in their storefront?
You would, I mean, since they're licensed already for tobacco, you would essentially be grandfathering them in as, you know, for to get the licenses, they would pretty much be grandfathered in. I think you would decide how many more additional tobacco licenses would the city potentially be willing to give out on an annual basis.
Yep.
Because you're gonna obviously, you're gonna put this in a controlled setting in one particular part of town where it's gonna be designated, so, you know, obviously, you can, within, you know, establish some reasonable limits on how many additional licenses could be allotted or available on an annual basis. And you have that authority to set that as part. to set that as part of establishing these ordinances.
I just think if we approve it, they know we're just going to make a change after change after change. I think that the committee would be good to study a little bit more and get other, you know, others' feedback on what direction that the city wants to go. So I certainly support that. If there's any council members interested in, it's basically just bringing something a little more complete and we're full of all the bigger decisions.
And then the other thing is, Chief kind of touched on this, but I think the political winds of the state legislature are, I think, pretty strong that they're going to, they're going to legalize marijuana in the state of Minnesota this upcoming. I would be shocked if they didn't. And it is going to be legalized in the state of Minnesota probably by the end of the legislative session. The effective date on that might not be until July or August as far as when, or maybe beyond that, as far as when it goes into effect. But it's very likely going to happen and then, you know, that'll change the landscape too, as far as all that's regulated within each community.
And you'll see that the ordinance in front of you does not specifically say edibles for that very reason. You know, it says any products, so.
So this, if, once we finalize this ordinance, it would include if marijuana became legalized, it would also fall under this category?
Yep, any THC products, yep.
Well, I guess what I'm hearing is we should probably set up a committee to figure on the finding zoning laziness.
And I should mention, this was brought to planning and zoning first. They were more than happy with the two changes made to the planning ordinance, so.
And if the committee looks at, you know, the potential for a moratorium and if that's still something the council can do, the committee can bring that forward as a recommendation too.
Okay, I'd like to add some more research on this.
Of course.
So Stuart, Becky, Tim, committee?
Well, there's any other councils? I think we have one more council member that will apply and will be moved, so.
Are we willing to sit on that? So that'd be willing to sit on that? I know it was discussed at our last, these are each one of the safety boards, that we would like to kind of keep same language in both here and Aurora.
Yeah, that's, we're having really good luck with some of our blight ordinances carrying them to match. But the city, we look a little bit different as far as geographically, some of the concerns we don't have in the way, we don't have the hospital and different stuff. But yeah, the more, it's easier to us to enforce when our committees are on the city.
So when this committee meets, I can definitely reach out to Aurora and invite them to those committee meetings as well. Everyone's comfortable with that?
I think that would be good. Do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
Do we need a motion that we set up the committee, myself, Stuart Porter, Becky Lundy, Jim Suler? Your support?
I'll support that.
Motion made by Mayor Zins, supportive of Councilor Pop. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Eliminate Walker Drew and Hani audit service contract for financial year 2022.
This is a contract you approve every year. It is a little lower than it was in 2021, financial year 2021, because we don't anticipate that you will have a single audit this year. So that single audit is a little more expensive.
So is there a motion to approve the contract with Walker Drew and Hani, the amount of twenty eight thousand seven fifteen?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Councilor Kramer, supportive.
I'll support.
Support by Councilor Blair Mary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. And the EEOA Energy Water Assistance Program.
You missed another guy.
Discussion regarding blight ordinance.
Councilor Pop requested that this be on the agenda. I did put a couple ordinances in front of you. Jordan is also here, so take her way.
Maybe Jordan, if you want to step up to the podium. So this is kind of what Tim alluded to, is we're kind of trying to keep ordinance similar between Aurora and White Lakes. As Jordan took over the blight officer job over in Aurora, in casual conversation, he had mentioned to me the fact that in Aurora's ordinance, they have that vehicles need to be parked either on an improved surface, driveway, gravel, whatever, and that's not included in the White Lakes ordinance. And he said it makes his job of enforcement a lot easier, you know, when people tuck a vehicle in the side yard, front yard, and there's grass growing up and out of it and around it and critters running around and stuff. So I felt it deemed at least consideration by the council that we look at this, discuss it. I think I had Becky include in both of the packets. So if you look at the Aurora nuisance order, it comes out of ninety point one nine unlawful parking and storage. And then scroll down to B stating that vehicles are parked or stored outside in the front yard area must be impaved, gravel parking area or driveway area. So Jordan, anything you'd like to add to that or?
No, I'd just like to see that we could copy that. So all cities are... Guys, a lot of the concern, I understand exactly what you're saying, the vehicles that are parked outside the homes all swim through weeds around. But maybe you take the exception in white, which is different than Aurora. We don't have alleys. Maybe during that calendar parking or winter period where if that family needs to plow a spot into the grass, you know, in part for the winter to get up, so the pub works, they're not entering a snow pump. That's the only difference. I think we look a lot alike, I think, as we build these ordinances in the boardroom, but white residents will look at a single stall or single garage. It's hard to get two or three and we're seeing more and more vehicles and stuff. So our view is open and it is discretionary at that point. I know Dan, I think we get into that March, April, and you got two foot ruts and that's not what we're looking for because it takes till July for the front yard to get one again. But just be mindful of that as far as the enforcement. And I think that we just look at, at things on a case by case basis because they do need to be off the street during the winter for sure. And a lot of people are really general, calling this a... I wouldn't expect you to be over there on the shop and see if there are improved surfaces.
And I know just for a general information purpose, so I did a drive around a couple weeks ago before we had snow. And there were actually, I counted forty-eight vehicles parked in people's front yards. And this was at a time when I would have expected most people to be at work or whatever. I, at that time, I couldn't tell whether that vehicle was operational, non-operational. So today I did a drive around and then, and there were also twenty-five vehicles in backyards that I could see from just driving through the, through the yard. And there were nine front yards that had multiple, up to four vehicles are diagnosed, which we... So I did a drive around today. There was thirty-five. Six of them were snow covered, which, so they'd been sitting there, probably not moved since the first snow hit shortly after November fourteenth. The backyard had eighteen. Eight of those were snow covered. And seven that had multiple vehicles in the front yard. So... And again, I, the wintertime, I think it's, it's not as big a problem, but I mean, in the summer, when there's ruts this deep and, you know, that's, that's when it becomes, why should neighbors have to put up with that and look at that? And, you know, just like all the other blight ordinances. And I think Jordan's doing a heck of a job. And in the term that I've been on, on the council here in four years, it was one of my main agenda items was to try to get somewhere on blight. And I think we've made huge strides. I mean, we've gone through, you're the what, the third blight officer, I think. So Jordan Kahlsted started it out, and then Sandy Schumacher, and then you took over. So we've, you know, and we've made huge, huge strides. We've got a ton to go, a ton more ways to go. And that was the other reason I kind of wanted to have it on, on the agenda here. With me not running for council next year, I would like to see one of the counselors kind of pick up and kind of help out with the liaison to Jordan, to be an extra set of eyes driving around, if that's fine with, with Becky and America. So I think it's, it's something that we need to continue building on. You know, we have a lot of cooperation with him and from weekly meetings and ultimate number of vehicles that have been told and cleaned up. But there still are many, many residences and it's just, I feel for those residences. And so I've got a, an extra neighbor whose house is for sale and you go in their kitchen and look out the back window. And I tell you, I would never buy that house knowing that every time I looked out that back window, I had to look at the junk pile that was there. And there's a number of residences that, that are similar to that. And we need to, we need to continue to work at and, and minimize those numbers and, and get them down. I know it's not ever going to get to zero, but it's the goal. So just to compliment you two on the work you're doing both here and in Aurora. So.
I could maybe see unlicensed vehicles, but with White Lakes being an all-season city, it's hard for residents to get garage parking for their boat, their camper, their ATV, their snowmobiles, and their daily drivers. The White Lakes lots themselves are almost too small to fit all those things. I'm not sure how you would expect a lot of people in town to be able to get their equipment off the grass.
Right. And by the same token, driving around, many of those residences did have a slab bar laid on each side of their, you know, one side of the garage and did a double driveway and put another pad on the other side of the house to, to store their stuff. So it is possible. It's costly to the homeowner and, but if, it all depends on how, how much we want to push blight. And, and I have no problem if, if the vehicles and the equipment is operable and it's kept in a neat order and the grass is cut and stuff. But it's, it's the ones that are parked and, and forgotten about in the back corner. And then the mice and rats are running to the neighbors, so.
I just think if you're sort of another tool, that's another violation of when you're inspecting that property.
Yep.
And then when, you know, it becomes a citation and it doesn't look important, it's just a little bit poor reassurance that the place is not compliant and needed address. I mean, Jordan gives them a length, lengthy grace period to work with them to rectify. So I agree. I mean, the houses aren't going any cheaper as we saw here the last six months. And, you know, the property is increasing without doing improvements. And if everybody will tell them to be mindful and continue to improve their properties, at least junk vehicles, stuff they can. The city offers any kind of assistance. If you're unable to move that vehicle, the city has a contract with the local towing company. They'll come in and tow it and get it out of there. I don't think we've turned anybody down. It's easy to help to get in compliance. So the goal is always compliance. And if we don't get compliance, we know warnings don't change every year, citations do. Eventually, I know Jordan's making his third, fourth run through town with some of the same houses that we all driven by for the last twenty-five years and shit like that. So.
So tonight, this was just informational?
Kind of just informational and maybe, maybe if we can, I can work with Becky on how we could try to incorporate some wording in there when it comes to the enforcement end of it. Or Jordan can maybe work with Becky on that as to...
So that would be a motion to direct City Administrator Lamie and Blight Officer Horansky.
Yep.
To update ordinance to most closely match Aurora's.
That'd be perfect.
That's your motion?
Yep.
Councilor Pop, does she support? I'll support that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. And eleven ten, EEOA Energy Water Assistance Program, Becky?
Um, so there has been quite a bit of back and forth regarding the EEOA Energy Assistance Program. We received notification in June of this year that there was this program available through EEOA for residents to receive help with their utility bill. I had requested information back from them and I received a policy manual for the program. I reviewed the policy manual and I had some follow-up questions. All of this taking place in June. In November, on November sixteenth, EEOA finally did respond to some of the questions. However, I still have the remaining questions listed on the form. I'll run through those quickly now. EEOA did not provide the city with a dispute resolution procedure, which is required by the program. I don't know what the terms EEOA would be looking for as far as a dispute resolution procedure. So they didn't provide me a draft on that. We are required to monitor homes for residency. So this means the city must know if someone is living at the property or not for each of the households, which we don't always know if someone vacates the property and just leaves the water on. We are required to monitor the benefit received by each household and report if there are any perceived issues with the benefit or eligibility. So I'm not entirely sure how we would determine if someone should be eligible for the program or not. The city is required to provide information to EEOA or the state of Minnesota in the format which EEOA or the state requires. This may cause significant issues, especially with our Banyan billing system. They are not the most user friendly. So if the state or EEOA request information in a report format that we don't have, that means we have to create the report in Excel and transfer all the data in manually. We have to update and maintain an account in the E-Heat system for households on this program. And this is probably the biggest one. The city would be required to reinstate services for households on this program regardless if their bill is current. So the, the program doesn't pay for sanitation services, so that's about twenty percent of our bill that would not be covered. So essentially, a household could have a very large bill still outstanding with the city and we would be required to turn water services back on. And remember, water services are basically our only recourse when someone isn't paying their bill, is to shut them off. The city council would not be able to deny a payment plan if requested, even if the household has a history of non-payment on service plans or any other reason that they see fit. So right now, if a payment plan request comes in front of the council, the council can take a look at that payment plan and either approve or deny it for whatever reason. If you sign up for this program, you would not be eligible for that. If one of the households requested a payment plan, you would be required to allow that household to make those payment plans. So if, if the council wants me to continue to follow up with the EEOA, I can. If the council wants to approve the program, we can do that. Or if you want to deny the program, you can do that as well. Those are just the remaining questions I have after reviewing the policy information and the questions and answers provided to me by EEOA.
Did this come about because we've had people requesting to be on this program?
Yes. We had, in June, we had two residents request this program. EEOA called us or emailed us, I can't remember which, asking us to register for it. I said, well, what does that mean for the city? And that's when that back and forth happened. So, so we do have a couple of residents that have requested it. Ones that have very significant assessment balances. But remember, their water is off now. And so if, if you choose to allow this program and go forward, even though they have those very large balances, we have to turn their water back on.
Well, from what I'm seeing, Becky, there's a lot of things that you haven't gotten answers to as far as a dispute resolution procedure. And how do we monitor homes for residency?
I don't know how we'd monitor the benefit received by each household. So do they just mean this benefit or any state?
No, no, it'd be this benefit. So, so if, if a household was receiving this benefit and... So, so if, if a household was receiving this benefit and we suspected that they weren't eligible for the benefit, we would be required to report that to AEOA. But on what terms would we make that determination? Yeah, there's just a couple kind of vague. I think we'd need more answers from her first. Okay.
And to clarify, so if someone is receiving those benefits, does the payment come directly to the city of White Lakes, or does it go to the resident and then their...
It comes, it comes direct from the state of Minnesota Office of Management and Budget. It's a direct deposit directly from them. So it does come right to the city, but remember, this is for every service except sanitation, so water and sewer. So we would only receive partial payment for that.
So, what happens to, if these, any of these two individuals or residents that applied for that have outstanding, large outstanding bills? Is the city able to recoup that, or?
So your current process for recouping those large outstanding balances is twice a year, we assess balances, and they're usually about between three and $600. So those get assessed to their property taxes, and then when someone pays their property taxes, that's part of that collection, and we get that money back and then pay off those assessment balances for each homeowner that has an assessment. But, once they've reached their turnoff balance, they get shut off and they don't get turned back on until their current balance due, so that's the balance you see on your postcard you get every month, plus all of their assessment balance has been paid. So essentially, a person could have thousands and thousands of dollars in back bills and their water would not get turned back on until all of that money was paid to the city. Under this program, the city would receive a partial payment for that, and we would be required to turn the water back on. We would have no recourse for the parts of the bill that AEOA does not pay. We, we can't prevent trash pickup, that kind of thing, so. And I mean, I guess specifically for the two people that have requested this, have they asked to be put on a payment plan to try to pay off their dues that they are currently behind on? No. Okay.
Would the remaining balance be continued to add to the tax assessment?
Yes.
So if the house was ever sold, then you would recoup your costs?
Correct, or if they pay their property taxes.
I think the council's always been very open about if anybody has financial issues as far as paying their water to, can address the council and set up a payment plan or come down to the city hall and set up a payment plan. I think we've all seen past bills that were in arrears, and there was no, I think at our last meeting, we didn't have anybody show up to try and rectify that situation, so...
And I do want to mention that when I started here, the city had several tens of thousands of dollars in back, back payments due to you. You're now just under $10,000. So, so we've made quite a few gains by holding the line and saying, "These are our expectations for our residents." Like you mentioned, we're always willing to work with people and get that payment plan in place, but we do have an expectation that people also pay their bills because we too have bills to pay. Yeah, I'm not opposed to the program in general. I just think we need more answers, and I'd rather not do it for an after the fact, you know, like, "Oh, I, my water's shut off. Now, you know, reinstate it because I'm in this program." They could have done this program before it got to that point, or they could have come and talked to us before it got to that point, so. Just a little, you know, I think we just need more answers on it first.
Would you like to table this, so we get more information?
Yeah, I would recommend just tabling it till she can, Ms. Peltier can answer some more of those questions for us.
Do you have any other motion?
Yes, please.
Councilor Grant has made a motion to table this. Do we have further information? Is there support?
I'd support that.
Given by Councilor Kramer. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Councilor Kramer, support?
I'll support.
Support by Councilor Bordeur. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everybody.